An agenda or study session for the City Council of Wheat Ridge, October 3rd, 2022. I am Janice Hoppe. I will be standing in for the mayor and mayor pro tem. Bud and Rachel will not be with us this evening. We typically start study sessions with public comment on agenda items. And so I will grab the list for me, please. Public comment is for three minutes. When you come to the podium, say your first and last name. Please spell your last name and give your address. After you do that, please give the clerk a moment to start the green light. When the green light turns on, you have three minutes. When the green light flashes, you have one minute. When it turns yellow, you have 15 seconds, so please wrap up your comments. So when it turns red, you're done. I have Katie Zabak with Cassie Herrera on deck and then Morgan Richards.
Hi, my name is Katie Zabak, Z-A-B-A-C-K, and I live at 4310 Garland Street. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks so much for the opportunity to speak on the third agenda item. I know so many of us in our community were blindsided by the Board of Education's choice to close or consolidate half of Wheat Ridge schools. This decision will have unprecedented impacts on our community and on many of us individually. I will be the first to admit that I wish, I don't know if this proposal is the right answer. I am certainly not happy with how the district treated the community of Wheat Ridge. I wish that they would have recognized the impact that closing six out of eight schools has on a community and that they had recognized the fact that many of our schools who are getting consolidated have very different communities. And it takes a lot to integrate schools with different communities. I wish that they would have provided more confidence in our community around doing the background research and knowing what was happening with development in the community. And I wish that they would have acknowledged the history of school closures in this community. And there's probably a list of other things. I think you heard a lot of them last week. I understand the urge to fight, but I also don't want to see our community in a place like this again in five years from now. And it's highly likely we will be. Our district has a $40 million budget deficit. And the population of students contained in our schools in Wheat Ridge continues to decline. I know it is counterintuitive, given what we see in our neighborhoods, but I do education research and data for a living. And that was the first thing I noticed when I moved to Wheat Ridge, that we were at risk of losing elementary schools. I also love small schools, but I know that many school parents who have choice are not going to choose schools that can't offer music and PE courses, classes, that can't afford to provide the necessary support for students that have to combine grades out of necessity, not plan, and that can't promise that they will keep their doors open. I absolutely think that the city council should weigh in on this proposal. But I think that the, we should think really broadly about what weighing in looks like. I think we need to ask for what we want from the district. I think the things that families are asking for can be achieved through this school consolidation. If we ask that every family in Wheat Ridge can choose a school of their choice within our articulation area, we reframe these from school closures to school consolidations that are bringing together communities. We put curriculum, buildings, all of the various things onto the table and ask that these be considered through this process. We make sure that everybody has the right special education choice and center program across our articulation area. And we demand that the district invests in our high school and middle school and take them off the table for future processes. So thank you so much for the opportunity to speak, and I hope you consider this as you consider that item.
Thank you. Cassie Herrera?
Hi, good evening. My name is Cassie Herdert. It's H-E-R-T-E-R-T. I live at 4150 Carr Street. Wonderful. Well, I appreciate the time to share with City Council tonight my perspective on the proposed school closings. So I am a relatively new resident of Wheat Ridge. I moved to the area in October of last year. But I'm also a returning resident, so I grew up in Wheat Ridge, initially starting my elementary education at Color Strand and eventually moving to Vivian when my mother purchased a house across the street. So these schools have long been a part of my community. I'm now in the Wilmore Davis District. When I moved to Wheat Ridge, I moved from Northwest Denver because I had found the overcrowding in that community and the density there just wasn't really good for our lifestyle anymore. So I have a six-month baby at home, and I also have an eight-year-old and a nine-year-old. When we looked at where we wanted to go, I wanted to come to a community that boasted great schools for the children. Experience in the Denver Public School has been less than ideal for a variety of reasons. As I thought about what I wanted for my six-month-old as she entered the school system, I wanted a community like Wheat Ridge, one that I had grown up in and one that I had experienced. The reason I wanted this is because it's important to me that we support the public school system. I agree with comments that have been made in the past that we have a budget crisis, and they need to be, they need to be addressed. However, when we look at the schools that they've selected for consolidation or closure, we're looking at schools that are serving our students that are most in need. Now, full disclosure, I will say that my older child is still in the Denver Public School system. And the reason for that is because he's special needs. There's a program that is meeting his needs, and I will drive all the way across town to continue to meet those needs because that's what's important to me and to my family. Many of the families in my community are being affected in a very similar way. Their children have special needs that are not going to be able to be met by the schools that they'll be consolidating into. We have deaf and hard of hearing programs. We have autism spectrum disorder programs. We have programs that are vital to this community that are being threatened with closure. When we look at the data, there are some significant issues in the way that the data is being interpreted. We see a disproportionate impact not only to our Wheat Ridge articulation area, but also to students that have these special needs, to students of colors, to students of color, to students that are on free and reduced lunch. This is very problematic, and it sends the wrong message to our community about what we care about in Wheat Ridge. I ask the City Council to please oppose these changes, allow the school board an opportunity to work with the community that's most affected by these changes so that we can come up with a collaborative solution together. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Morgan Richards, please.
Hi, I'm Morgan Richards, R-I-C-H-A-R-D-S, and I live at 3255 Ames Street. And I'm a parent of teenagers and a local business owner, and I founded Wheat Ridge for Equity. I'm here tonight because I think it's really important about how we think about equity in the consolidation of our elementary schools from eight to five. Our Wheat Ridge articulation area has 2,349 excess seats, which is 12.3% of all the open seats in the district. It's the highest. And that is really impacting our kids, especially when you think about the per pupil funding, which ranges in our district from $13,870 clear up to $19,000 plus and change. That is inequitable. One way to achieve equity is with this consolidation plan so that every school has a more equal amount of funding per student. That is important because with the missing kids in our articulation area at $9,300, $9,300 per pupil, that's $21 million of funding that doesn't happen in our articulation area. And our kids are hurt by these, that missing money. There's missing services. There's missing staff. I attended community meetings at several of our schools related to these consolidations. And at our most diverse school, they do not have an English as a second language instructor or support services. Every single school is missing services. They're missing staff. That is not an equitable learning experience for any child. Equity, as you've heard me say before, is not the easy thing. It is the hard thing. And so I also ask you to champion our community, to participate in the process, to demand from the district what our students need to make these school consolidations. Give us schools that are more equitable and inclusive. That is possible. Stop using the words of closing and receiving schools. Think about, we are making eight new schools. That means new names, new mascots, new school cultures, and community agreements. This is a chance for disruption of the systemic racism and marginalization that has led to this situation at hand. Because as the funding went, so more students went. I'm concerned if we don't face this with practicality and advocate for our kids, we're going to lose our middle school and high school, and that's not going to help anybody. Thank you very much for your leadership. This is not easy work.
Thank you. I'm going to ask our clerk, Kirkpatrick, if there is anybody online that would like to comment. Great. Thank you, and thank you for everybody who came in. I'm going to close the public comment on agenda items now and move forward with our agenda. Item one, homeless navigation update. City manager, Goth.
Thank you. Mary Ann Schilling, our assistant city manager is here. She's going to introduce our, this item.
Good evening. Mary Ann Schilling, Assistant to the City Manager. I'm here tonight with Rebecca Radabaugh, our homeless navigator, and Corey Kohler, our housing navigator, and they are going to give a homeless navigation program update. After that, they will be available for any questions that you might have. So now I'll turn it over to Rebecca and Corey.
Good evening. My name is Rebecca Radabaugh, the homeless navigator for the city of Wheat Ridge. Tonight, we wanted to come to council to give an update on the work of the homeless navigation program. First, we'll introduce the new housing navigator and speak a little bit about how the rules of the homeless navigator and housing navigator differ. We'll then discuss how the severe weather shelter network will work this year and then give a brief update on the Built for Zero initiative and end our presentation with client updates and success stories. We'll then turn the presentation over to the city manager to provide an update on the navigation center.
So hello. My name is Corey Kohler. I am the housing navigator for the city of Wheat Ridge. I grew up in Wheat Ridge, so it's an honor to be serving in this role and giving back to the community that I'm from. A little bit about my professional history. Before starting this position, I worked at Denver Human Services as an advocate, providing supplemental services to those receiving benefits. Before that, I was, I served three years at the Action Center, overseeing many of the day-to-day operations there. And during the pandemic, was looped into the rental relief program to help administer that money. And then before that, I served six legislative sessions at the House of Representatives as a nonpartisan clerk. So you've all been given a program overview sheet with a bit of description about our positions and some FAQs of certain situations that you might encounter, but I'll give some highlights. So much like Rebecca, I provide direct support to clients and collaborate with community partners like nonprofits, the other navigators in Jeffco, and other community partners to provide that support to the clients. The main difference is going to be that whereas Rebecca's primary focus will be on those experiencing literal homelessness, including unsheltered homelessness, my primary focus will be twofold. One has some overlap in that Rebecca's clients that become housing or housing search ready, she will hand over to me. So this might, for example, be someone who has a housing voucher in hand and is ready to find a place to use that voucher, that will accept that voucher. So in that situation, I would take the client over from Rebecca. Of course, we would still collaborate to help that client in whatever they need. And the other aspect of my focus will be those at risk of homelessness. And we realize that that's a very, very broad term and can take many different forms. As I'm sure most of you know, that a lot of people are one missed paycheck away, so you could consider that as at risk of homelessness. But for our purposes, we've tried to narrow it down a little bit to folks who might be in a motel, in an extended stay, or folks who are couch surfing, maybe staying with friends or family, or for people who are maybe at risk of eviction or maybe just their lease isn't being renewed, that kind of situation. And the assistance to that population can take a couple of different forms, from just simply referring folks to rental assistance programs. So, you know, making it my job to be aware of all of the rental assistance programs available in the area and helping folks applying, apply to those rental assistance programs, help them apply for new housing if they are going to lose their current housing, or just communicating with landlords. So a lot of different ways that that, that that can look. So we kind of view it as I'm a bit more of the property manager slash owner-facing side of the program as opposed to Rebecca, who would be more client-facing. But we each still do a bit of both. Okay, so with temperature dropping, temperatures dropping, we wanted to give you an update on shelter from the elements for people experiencing homelessness. So first, I'm going to talk about the process for individuals. So that is households without anyone under the age of 18. This year, we are continuing to partner with the Severe Weather Shelter Network, which I'm sure you're all aware of. Their season started on Saturday. It goes from October 1st through April 30th. And just a reminder about the thresholds, their program is activated when the temperature drops below 32 degrees and there is moisture, or the temperature drops below 20 degrees regardless of moisture. So the folks at Severe Weather Shelter Network take a look at their forecasts, and then each day by 9:00 a.m., they make a determination about whether they will activate the program, and they send that out to all interested parties and all community partners in the county to let us know. There is a pretty significant change from last year. So last year, they, because of the pandemic, they were relying heavily or exclusively on motel vouchers. There will not be any motel vouchers this year. They are returning to their pre-COVID model, which is a congregate shelter in churches. So for their purposes, they've divided the metro area of Jefferson County into three regions. There's the North Region, which is Arvada and Wheat Ridge, Central, which is Golden, Lakewood, and Edgewater, and South, which is Inglewood and Littleton. There will be one church per region, and each can accommodate up to 40 guests per night. So these are run by paid staff as well as multiple volunteers who are trained and who stay the night with the guests. As of right now, we do not know which church is the church for, for any of the regions, but most relevant for us, the North Region, they are still finalizing fire code and inspections, and so they haven't told us which churches they are yet, but we should hear probably by the end of this week. So guests must still register in order to receive shelter. They only need to register once per season, though, not per severe weather event. And a good change this year, registration has become much easier. They can register online or even over the phone. And so for folks who don't have a phone, when Rebecca and I are on outreach every week, we're helping whoever, whoever wants to help, to help them register. We can do that on our phone, but we're also just passing the information out so that everyone knows. Severe Weather Shelter Network is also having registration events, so they are trying to get as many people registered as early as possible. There are eligibility criteria for this congregate model. Folks must be able to get up and down off the ground without assistance. They are not allowed to have pets. And of course, they're trying to serve only Jefferson County, so the guests must spend, you know, a significant or most of their time in Jefferson County. And each guest must also consent to a background check. We realize that not everyone meets those criteria, and so we are collaborating with the other navigators and Jefferson County Human Services, and we do have a plan in place to help as many of the ineligible as we can. So on the day of an event, a severe weather event, a registered guest just needs to reserve their spot. Again, this happens over the phone or online, or they can go in person to one of three locations, again, one location per region, where they can also get bus tickets to get to the church. Severe Weather Shelter Network is providing those bus tickets. So just to be clear again, it is possible for guests, if they, if they need to, to register and reserve a spot on the same day. Registration is a very quick process, and the reservation is the same, so they can do both at once if need be. And just for your information, in the North Region where we are, the location where folks can go to get those bus tickets or to reserve their spot in person is Mission Arvada. So shelter sites, the churches open at 3:00 p.m. on the night of an event, and guests must arrive before 6:00 p.m. unless they make a prior arrangement with severe weather staff. Between the hours of 3:00 and 6:00 are what they are calling connection hours. So this is a time, an opportunity for service providers, such as ourselves and the other navigators, or things like Stride, Jefferson Center, even the DMV-to-go program can provide services to potentially up to 40, 40 people experiencing homelessness in one location. So it's a way to kind of efficiently provide these other kind of wraparound services. Every guest receives a hot meal the night of the event, safe storage for their possessions, but they are limited on what possessions they can bring. They can only take what will essentially fit on their lap into the church, but that will be safely stored for them. They will be sleeping on the floor, but they have blankets. And then they will be served a light breakfast as well and must leave the shelter site by 7:00 the next morning. Officers, law enforcement, countywide have been contacted by Severe Weather Shelter Network and notified of a number to call if they encounter someone after hours, so they can call, and they know the eligibility criteria as well, so they can sort of assess if the person they're encountering fits that eligibility criteria and then call Severe Weather Shelter Network, the regional coordinator at whichever region they choose, and see if there's room, and then they can drop, drop that person off if that's the best course of action for them. So that's for individuals. For families, and here, just to reiterate, we mean households with at least one person under the age of 18. There are motel vouchers. This is, these are being provided by the county. The county has partnered with pre-designated motels. Those may change throughout the season, but there are some partnerships in place now. And there are three entry points for families who need those motel vouchers. One is the Action Center. One is Jefferson County Human Services. And the third is their McKinny Vento liaison at school. These families must have a Jeffco connection, so that can, that's either receiving benefits through the county, enrolled at a school, or their last residence was in Jeffco. And during their stay at the motel, each of these families will be contacted by the county family navigators to see, again, what other services they can provide and how they can help move them forward. And it is noteworthy also that the, this system for families has a little bit more flexibility than the Severe Weather Shelter Network's declaration of severe weather events. So the county, because this is a sort of completely separate program, majority of the time, they'll go with the Severe Weather Shelter Network's declaration of whether a certain day is a severe weather event or not, but they have the ability or the flexibility to decide on their own if they want to designate a night a severe weather night. So that's a lot of information, and some of the small details are still being worked out. All of it, though, is available on the Heading Home website. That's headinghomejeffco.com. But we also plan to send each of you a detailed email with all this info once it's set in stone.
The Built for Zero movement. So this movement is made up of 100 cities and counties that have committed to measurably ending homelessness for entire populations. The goal is to achieve a milestone known as Functional Zero, an ongoing state where homelessness is rare and brief. During my last update to council in February, I shared that Jefferson County had just started their case conferencing. Case conferencing is a recurring problem-solving meeting, bringing key participants together to collaborate on ways to remove barriers to help house clients faster. During our meetings, we have representation from multiple agencies, including Veteran Affairs, Volunteers of America, Rocky Mountain Human Services, and any other agencies working with someone that is an identified veteran on our list. And so those agencies that I just mentioned are primarily manage the funding for SSVF, Supportive Services for Veteran Funding, and so that's why a lot of those agencies are at this meeting. During our case conferencing meetings, we look at each name on the list and discuss how we can collaborate and remove barriers to help get the client housed. At this time, we've identified 21 veterans in Jefferson County, and we're still anticipating that this number will continue to rise as more agencies join and kind of buy into the movement and are actively identifying veterans. In the past eight months since the last update to council, we have housed 15 individuals on our veteran list. Since our program launched in December of 2020, it has served a total of 166 individuals. 55 of those individuals just being enrolled since the last update in February. And of that 166 number, 15 clients have exited to transitional housing. And what I mean by transitional housing is it could be an emergency shelter, temporary housing like a rapid rehousing program, staying with a family or friend. Maybe the client paid for a motel by themselves. They could have gone to a substance use treatment facility, sober living, or even jail. And so we have 36 individuals that have exited to permanent stable housing. And so that's 28 since our last update in February. The homeless navigators continue to have, or the homeless navigator continues to have an active caseload of 58 clients, and the housing navigator has an actively growing caseload of six clients. All clients on my caseload, the housing navigator's caseload, as Corey mentioned, when they're housing ready, they'll be transferred over to the housing navigator to help with that housing search. And then the housing navigator is also taking direct referrals from individuals in the community who have a voucher or would like some assistance with the housing search process. In early September, the program received a generous donation of 20 moving kits from the Glory of God Lutheran Church. These kits consist of a high-quality air mattress with sheets and a pillow, bowls, plates, cutlery, a laundry basket with laundry detergent, shower rod, curtain, a shower curtain, paper towels, and toilet paper and dish soap. And these kits go a long way to try to eliminate some of those stressors of folks not having much when they move into their apartment. So we are very excited to receive this generous donation. So we were very excited to receive this generous donation. Lastly, we wanted to share some success stories from the efforts of the program. During my first week of this position back in December of 2020, I received a referral for an individual who had frequently been seen in our courtroom for tickets or summons related to homelessness. After completing an intake with this client and spending time with them, I learned that this individual had been diagnosed with cancer a few years earlier and lost their job and then their home as a result of not being able to pay their bills. Over the last year and nine months that I've been working with this individual, they've continued to have setback after setback. First, a friend that they really trusted and was helping them with their unemployment ended up stealing their unemployment and their stimulus checks. In October of 2021, almost a year ago, this individual qualified for emergency hotel assistance through ERAP, the Emergency Rental Assistance Program that was a result of the pandemic. This client was very confident that if they had a stable place to stay, they would be able to maintain employment and self-pay for an apartment. Once this person was placed in a motel in a different city in Jeffco, there was a shooting at the motel just a couple of rooms down from them. So due to this nature of the incident and how severe it was, I was able to work with the funding source of their ERAP program and move this client to another hotel. Shortly after moving hotels, this individual was hit by a car while riding their bike and had to be transported to Lutheran for medical attention. So due to these unforeseen events, this client was unable to maintain employment. This past spring, luckily, the client's name came up on a Section Eight waitlist for one of our local housing authorities. So this individual was having a very hard time getting approved for an apartment due to not having income, not having a good credit score or rental history in the past few years, and they were currently staying in those motels with ERAP funding. And so at the end of July, ERAP funding ended, and this client was potentially looking at staying back on the street again, which could be detrimental. So since this client already had a housing voucher and was actively engaged with the homeless navigation program, we were able to provide motel vouchers through the Bridge Housing Program until she secured a move-in date. And at the end of September, this client was able to sign their lease and move into their first apartment in over four years. And the program was able to provide one of these above-mentioned moving kits to help them kind of get back on their feet. So this was just a great story to show how much work and how great the program is with helping folks just who continue to have setbacks after setbacks. I'm now going to turn it over to Corey Kohler to share another story.
Hello, yes, again. So this is another story that utilizes Bridge Housing Funds to stabilize someone who was experiencing homelessness. So this person's trailer burned down in January. They lived in their car for a few weeks. Their car was towed. They then were lucky enough to get a motel stay paid for by an agency in the area, but after that expired, they were living in a tent. But things started to turn around at the beginning of August. They did get a job at a convenience store with a luckily very understanding and supportive boss or manager, and this manager knew the situation and, you know, did, and it continues to do whatever they can to support the client, who is very hardworking, is now working more than forty hours a week usually. And so this is sort of a contrast to Rebecca's client, who just kept having setback after setback. This person seems to have, in terms of experiencing homelessness, a lot going for them, and so we're using the Bridge Housing Funds to pay for motel while the client and myself search for housing. So the client is following up on all the leads that I send as much as they can, given their work schedule. They're going to what showings they can, again, given their work schedule, and they're actively participating in the search. But just to give you some, an example and some kind of hard numbers here, so one of the units we were looking at and applied to was in an affordable housing complex, and the unit itself was priced for sixty percent AMI. So anyone who's making forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars or less, that's the sixty percent AMI. And this unit was priced according to that income level, and the rent is one thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. So if you're making sixty percent of AMI at this particular, this low-income housing complex, your rent is still one thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars. This client makes between forty and fifty percent AMI, so we just, we looked at the numbers and just decided that, the client really decided that they weren't going to make it work. It wasn't going to work with how much money they're currently making. So this isn't a housing success yet, but it is a successful use of Bridge Housing Funds, just stabilizing this person who, you know, did not have a reliable place to lay their head at night and allowing them to focus on their job and focus on searching for housing with our help. So now we will pass it over to Patrick, who will close it out with an update on the Navigation Center, and then afterward, we'll all be available for questions.
Great, thanks, Corey. I think you all remember, we've given you several updates that Jefferson County Health and Human Services initiated a program to potentially open two, what we're calling navigation centers in Jefferson County, one in the northern area and one in the, in more central area. These navigation centers would provide both long-term and short-term and emergency sheltering, but also all the wraparound services, a lot of things that Rebecca and Corey mentioned to help individuals experiencing homelessness. The county did an RFP process a while back, and only, unfortunately, only one company responded to that. Their name is Blue Line. They have experience in creating or standing up navigation centers. We've gone through a long, long process with them, and a site has been identified in Arvada by the city, not Blue Line, unfortunately. They're still trying to purchase that site. Lakewood had a site identified, but that fell through. Wheat Ridge does not qualify to receive, we don't have any census tracts that qualify to receive the, that are eligible for the low-income tax credits, believe it or not. So there's no eligible sites necessarily in Wheat Ridge for these navigation centers if they want to use tax credits. So we're still primarily looking at Arvada and Lakewood for locations. Lakewood is still looking for a new site. So Lakewood and Arvada recently got together and decided to part ways with Blue Line. They didn't feel it was moving forward in a way that was going to work long-term. Blue Line had brought Family Tree on as part of the project, and Family Tree is going to construct some low-income housing fairly close to the property that Arvada has identified for a navigation center. But we've decided to let Family Tree do that on their own, provide the affordable housing, but pull the navigation centers back more under the control of the city. So we're working on an IGA between all the different cities to figure out what the structure of this is going to look like long-term, because there will be a significant amount of upfront costs from all the cities and long-term expenses to run these navigation centers. We weren't feeling very comfortable with the structure that Blue Line was setting up, so we're taking a little bit of step backwards, but we are still moving forward with an IGA to figure out what the long-term structure will look like. Still trying to identify sites. Arvada is still trying to close on their site just north of Wheat Ridge in Arvada. So that's kind of a short and brief update on the navigation centers. Happy to answer any questions with that, but you guys done? We'll turn it over to any questions that you may have for any of us.
Councilwoman Weaver? Thank you so much for the update. I just had a couple of questions on how people can participate. You had said that the Glory of God Church had created those kits, and I'm just curious if individuals either want to learn how to volunteer, or if people want to make donations for those kits, or is that something that they can go create, or, you know, just, how could people get involved if they'd like to? And/or, you know, is it something where we could give money to Glory of God, we're making these things, and yeah?
Absolutely, great question. Glory of God Lutheran Church, they, particularly with this organization, they have a service fund and a service project they do each year. Last year, they also donated some service kits to the community, and so they had actually reached out to us and wanted to do that donation. We do have, we do take donations through the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation for the homeless navigation program, and those funds do go to moving kits, transportation. There's a full list on the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation page under civic funds. And then we also have on our Heading Home Jeffco website, we have a list of multiple ways that folks can volunteer or get involved, whether it's volunteering like a meal at the Mission Arvada, or monetarily, or something very small to, if they want to get involved in the Heading Home Jeffco group and get involved in one of the smaller work groups to kind of work more on an initiative. So there's a multiple different ways.
Okay.
And if anyone has any questions, they can reach out to the program, and we can try to direct them for exactly what they're looking for.
Is there any way, I know a lot of people want to volunteer in their community, is there any way that if they get involved, they can, they can participate in Wheat Ridge or in, like, for some of these emergency nights when it's cold, to get trained to work in the local church that's chosen close to their house, or, does that make any sense?
Absolutely. And I believe they are taking volunteers, they are looking for volunteers through the Severe Weather Shelter Network. Unfortunately, we don't have too many of, like, day shelters, kind of like Mission Arvada, and that's our closest, biggest resource to Wheat Ridge. Folks can definitely volunteer there, they're always looking for volunteers. And then if someone is interested, I believe you can go on the Severe Weather Shelter Network website, and then there's a dropdown for volunteering.
Okay.
So it could look anything as making the meal for the guest at night, or if someone wants to volunteer to stay overnight.
Very good, thank you. Councilmember states?
Thank you, Ms. Hoppy. Sorry. I thought it was kind of interesting today, I was here for a meeting this afternoon and sitting in the lobby, working on a couple of different things, and we had three or four, like, three or four different groups of people experiencing homelessness coming in and looking for information on the program and on what you're doing, so that word's getting out, so it's really good that, and you can definitely tell that you're doing a lot of good. I just had a question. I know we had passed the hotel ordinance a couple of months ago, and Corey, is that something you're going to be working on with those residents, or is that somebody else, or working on finding long-term homes for those people?
Yeah, we, the city, if you remember, using our dollars, were contracted with Family Tree, and they're going to be focusing on the motel residents. Corey and Rebecca will help or need it, but Family Tree is, that's their primary focus.
Great, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Nasler back?
Thanks for all the incredible work and the update on everything. I just had a question about the pets for people experiencing homelessness. Is there, so if someone is in crisis, looking for shelter, and they have a pet with them, is there an opportunity for them to let their pet go somewhere for the night and they can then stay, or is it, no, there's no option?
There is an option. Foothills Animal Shelter has kindly offered to take pets for whatever period of time they may be staying in a motel for the severe weather. Many folks understandably don't want to park with their pets, even for a night or so. And I will just also clarify, for the church's service animals are allowed under ADA rules, but the Severe Weather Shelter Network will do their own to determine whether service animal or pet.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a question about, do our neighboring cities have also housing navigators, or, what do the surrounding communities have? I know that we share Rebecca, but, you know, what do the other area cities have?
It varies, it varies from municipality to municipality. In Lakewood, they have two navigators that are based in their PD. Golden just has one navigator at this time. I believe Westminster just hired another navigator, and instead of doing a housing navigator, they brought on another homeless navigator, and so they're sharing that housing piece of it. And then Arvada currently only has a homeless navigator, and they're trying, I believe they're hiring for a housing navigator. They previously had a housing navigator, they're just in between people right now.
Awesome. And then I wanted to know also, if someone doesn't get preregistered for the Severe Weather Network, if they do end up at one of the churches, can they register there on site?
Yes, that's our understanding. As long as the forty threshold hasn't been reached and there's room, then yeah, that should be no problem.
Okay, great, thank you. I also know that we, when we looked at adopting our new codes, we did some fire codes specifically to our churches so that our churches could house during severe weather. Does anybody else have anything? Thank you very much, you guys, for this update. I really appreciate it, and thank you for all your work in our community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, we're going to move on to our second agenda item, which is the ethics code. And I believe that we have City Attorney Dahl here to have this discussion with us.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Council, you have a memo from me in your packet, and I'll try to not go through that memo, and instead, preparing for tonight, I thought, let's get a somewhat more fifty-thousand-foot overview to kind of remind us where we have been on this, because it's been since the pandemic, since before the pandemic, that we, this matter was in front of you, and I had to refresh my own recollection, actually. But let me just make a few basic points, and we can get direction, whether Council's at all interested in having a local ethics ordinance or not. And this is one of those times in which "or not" is perfectly, is a perfectly acceptable alternative. That's actually where you've been for all these many years, and the city seems to function all right. But there are a couple of considerations that I want to remind ourselves about that we talked about over two years ago now. In 2006, the voters amended the Colorado Constitution to add a whole new article called Ethics in Government, and that article created the Independent Ethics Commission, which is a three-member commission that often is looking for members. So if you want to serve, I think it's a governor's appointment, you could apply for that, but it's tough duty, I think. But in any event, that commission is charged with reviewing and acting on ethics complaints for public officials, not only state officials, but also local officials, unless you're in a homerool city that has adopted its own ordinance covering, quote, "matters governed by the Constitution." And that's the carve-out for homerools, and that allows Wheat Ridge's homerool municipality to be able to do that. Statuary municipalities, counties don't have that option if there's a complaint, an ethics complaint, under these few topics we'll talk about, that's lodged, that has to go to the Independent Ethics Commission. I've read any number of their decisions that they render, and they get way down in the weeds on some things, whether or not a gift is actually a gift, and things like that. But in any event, that's what happened in 2006, there was a carve-out for homerool municipalities. Importantly, the Constitution says, look, the carve-out is for homerool municipalities that have ordinances or resolutions that, quote, "address the matters governed by this article." And you would think that that's pretty easy to understand, and so did the city of Glendale. And the Glendale mayor had some complaints lodged against him, and he said, well, wait, we're a homerool city, we have an ordinance that's not identical to the Constitution, it's not identical to the IEC's Independent Ethics Commission's little handbook, but it covers the matters, you know, governed by the Constitution, and so therefore, our rules apply, and IEC doesn't have any jurisdiction over us. And the IEC challenged that, and that has been going through the courts now for about six years. The mayor won at the district court level, went up to the Court of Appeals, who were mandated back for further consideration by the district court where it now sits. And two years ago, I told you, well, we're bound to get a decision out of the district court, and that'll get appealed, and we'll have some guidance from the courts here on how detailed your local rules need to be to actually preempt the Constitution, and that hasn't happened, because it has just languished. And I've come around to the view that it's pointless to wait for the Court of Appeals to finally rule on something that I think it's actually highly likely City Glendale will prevail, because the courts are fairly forgiving about, if you're a homerool city, you get to make your own rules so long as they're reasonably comprehensive, I think is what's going to be. is what's going to be the, the outcome. So I've come to the conclusion that I can tell you, I, I believe that, that there's no point in waiting, and if the city's, the council's interested in doing some local ethics rules, you certainly can. The memo gives you what I believe is kind of a basic local ethics code, and it covers the topics covered by the Constitution, which are gift bans and restrictions on representation after leaving office, as well as the things the IEC says, sometimes without a basis, but they say, hey, we're in charge of conflicts of interest, appearance of impropriety, and post-government employment as well. And they have asserted that jurisdiction. I think to truly displace them, you'd need to have a local ordinance. And so the ordinance I put together here, the, the elements of the ordinance are in the, in the memo. You'll notice importantly, a couple of things, and then I'm pleased to take your questions. The IEC, on I think the second page of the memo, carves out what a gift, what a gift is, that's got to be disclosed, or that you can't have, and exceptions to the gift ban in, in a lot of detail. You'll notice on page three, I've done something different, which is to more generically define what a gift is, and it's one that would tend to improperly influence, a matter of substantial value, that would tend to improperly influence, and not get into more detail than that. But I have gotten into a lot of detail on what isn't a prohibited gift, because those are very often the things you're charged with, well, wait, didn't you receive a, a, a pen? Didn't you receive an honorary for appearing at that conference, et cetera? That's got to be a conflict of interest, that's got to be improper, and I think it's important to lay that out. Lastly, I guess, I've, I've got two sections on conflicts of interest, and there's no magic in this language, it can certainly be reworked. But enforcement, and that's something council probably should be aware of. Typically, home rule city enforcement mechanisms rely on the city council for complaints vis a, with respect to elected officials, and the city manager, city administrator for com, ethics complaints relating to employees. Makes good sense, and I think to do anything other than that for employees would violate the city's charter, which says, as you know, the city manager is in charge of all personnel matters for, for the city, with the significant exception of the manager, herself, myself, as the city attorney and the judge. But other than that, it's the manager who hires, fires, disciplines employees, and I would not ever recommend that we have a code provision, I think it'd be preempted by the charter anyhow, you wouldn't be able to go there. Typically, this comes up, though, in terms of, well, should the council be reviewing ethics complaints for its own members? Well, who else is going to, when you think about it, for elected officials? Secondly, there are two provisions in the charter right now that talk about conflicts of interest for elected officials and generally, and for the mayor, clerk, and treasurer, I think, and they read basically the same. And it, it gives that jurisdiction over to the council now. And I've reflected that in the kind of draft elements of a, of a conflicts ordinance. That's the report. After the passage of these years, I guess I've come to the view that in all the years I've been city attorney, I can't think that there's, at least since 2006, there have not been any ethics complaints filed at the IEC with respect to Wheat Ridge officers and employees. And so it's not something that cries out for a local ordinance. The reason home rule cities do local ordinances is so that if there is a complaint against one of you, against a city employee, that that complaint is handled locally, by yourselves if it's an elected official, and by the city manager if it's an employee. Without having that local system, then you, you are deprived of that jurisdiction if it does happen, and it's going to get processed up with the IEC. And that's why Mayor Dunneffin in Glendale didn't want to be in front of the IEC, he felt it was more important for him to be in front of the Glendale City Council. So there is that exposure. Having said that, in all these many years, there haven't been that many complaints. This is not a jurisdiction that seems to foster that, and I think that's to your credit. That's as much as I can tell you. You see, you've got a policy choice to make. If it's to not do anything, then we don't have to do anything more. If it's to consider it further, then I would suggest I put together a draft ordinance, although this is pretty close, and I can either bring it back to you for study session, and we can run it on first reading. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Ohm?
There's no, there's no light on this one. Thank you, Councilmember Hoppe. Mr. Dahl, the one, one question I have is, there's a term that you use, and I know accountants would call it safe harbor, something akin to that, what, and remind me what that term is, and what I'm looking for is the relevance to, is this what you've craft, crafted, it sounds like it's kind of in this, a little bit more in the safe harbor of what the state is requiring? Is, is that correct?
Well, a couple of things. I'd say that if, obviously, if you have a local ordinance that, quote, "covers the matters governed by the Constitution," that's the first part of a safe harbor, in the sense that then you've taken jurisdiction away from the IEC. Now, I'll say, this gives me the opportunity to say, the IEC, the whole, the IEC's whole argument with Glendale wasn't, you, you don't have any power to take our jurisdiction away. Their whole argument was, your rules aren't the same as ours, and so they have to be the same for you to have the, to use the constitutionally granted power to take our jurisdiction away as a home rule city. And Glendale said, no, the Constitution just says, well, the local ordinance has to, quote, "cover the, address the same matters covered by the Constitution, don't get so intense about it." And I think that's why I think Glendale's going to, going to win. I mean, you can't win by doing kind of licking a promise around that, but Glendale has, you know, they've done a workmanlike job. So that's the first safe harbor in terms of jurisdiction. Second safe harbor is within whatever ordinance you would ask me to write here, the sort of, the safe harbor rules are, especially around gifts, are, these are the things that aren't prohibited gifts. So that's why that list that I've put, you know, I think page three of the memo, is as long as it is, because that allows you to say, this is an item of perishable or non-permanent value. It's a payment for a speech. It's payment of salary from employment. It's a reimbursement of an actual expense for travel. So you don't sort of argue about the amounts, if it's that category, then you're safe. Is that responsive to your question?
Yeah, it sounds like it. Is that the correct term?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. The IRS will come up with safe harbors, too, for various things that you can do or not do, and if you can find yourself in that harbor, then you avoid an audit, which is always a good thing.
Councilwoman Weaver?
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe. I think this is great, I'd like to support us going forward with an ordinance, so we are protected, I guess, in, is that the appropriate language to use, that we can make our own decisions? So I would be supportive of this.
Yes.
I just was curious, on the appearance of impropriety, and what examples have been used in the past? And this is just more my curiosity of that word and the history involved in it, and how is it used currently?
Sure. I'm glad you asked. True conflicts of interest are easy, they're usually money, and I think I've always used, my analogy is follow the money, right, from the, from the All the President's Men movie, but I've had to update that to follow the money from, say, Tom Cruise and Jerry Maguire, or, right, help me, help you, no. I really need a, show me the money. Now, show me the money. Do I need a newer movie now? Or is that, is that going to work?
Pretty old.
Okay, fine. In any event, you know, that kind of con, that's a hard-edged conflict, it's money, and you can usually follow that. And Colorado case law is really good about saying it's money. But an appearance of, of, of impropriety, and you face this a lot, where people say, well, wait a minute, don't you know so-and-so? Aren't you in the same, don't you belong to the same health club? Don't you belong to the same church? I think that you are inclined to favor this person. There's an appearance, there isn't the, frankly, the money conflict, or in Colorado, the conflicts of interest law is either money, or it's a close family relationship, mother, father, spouse, son, et cetera. When you get sort of tertiary blood relationships, it drops off, and it's, well, find, you know, show me the money here. But an appearance of conflict, to be very blunt, is, is often used by people, or your opponents, or people that want you not to vote, because they're afraid of how you might vote on a thing, to say, well, isn't it true that you're a member of the same church, or whatever, and, and you shouldn't be able to participate, because you have an appearance of impropriety? Interestingly, the, the case law is, is pretty good about saying appearances are just appearances, but show me the money. If the money isn't there, if there isn't a close family relationship, you should always be able to vote. And that has come up any number of times since I've been city attorney, and I will, I've, I've often been asked to do a little Q and A with a council member on the diocese, say, is it true that you're a member of this organization? Yes. Do you, have you, do you have any financial connection with the applicant here in any way? Are you related to the applicant by blood or marriage? No. In that event, it's a mere appearance of impropriety. Do you still believe that you can render a fair decision? Yes. And then we go ahead. The, the, the language on appearance of impropriety that I've written here is really just to say, you know, try hard to make sure that you even avoid those, because that has to do with public confidence in what you're, in, in the way you're behaving in your role. And it, it also mentions the business about on quasi-judicial matters, avoid the, the, even the appearance of hobnobbing with, seeing applicants, opponents, et cetera, outside of the hearing room. And I give you that advice constantly. Anyhow, it's just as well to, to memorialize it, but you'll notice, as I've memorialized it in this proposed language, I've made it pretty general, because I don't want writing such a rule to then become the reason for another, for, for a, an ethics complaint against you, especially in the appearance arena. That is often used as a trap, and now I'm, now I'm expressing kind of my personal bias around that, having seen it used, less about really being concerned about your improper action, and more about a motivation to, to displace you from being able to act in your official role. So, other questions? Yep?
Mr. Dahl, I have a question. So when we first looked at this, it was a different council setup, and several of the members were concerned that council was the, was the body for, and, and so my question is two things. Is there a way for an appeal? So if we do have a home rule municipality ordinance, is there a way for an appeal? And also, who is the IEC? Like, are they appointed? Are they voted in? Where do they come from?
Thanks. Taking the second one first, it's been a while since I've looked at that particular constitutional provision, but I'm quite, I'm almost certain that it's a governor's appointment that might or might not be Senate ratified. I think it's three people, my last recollection, so that's who they are. Good people that have a lot of work, because complaints come in all the time, they don't have much of a staff, and I've, I've got at least, you know, I've got a book of their decisions this thick, and that was 10 years ago, and I'm sure they, they, cranking them out, there's 200, there's almost 300 municipalities in the state, there's 63, well, 62 counties, if you don't count Denver and Broomfield as cities and counties, and, and then there's all the state officials, and so that's a, that's a wealth of potential complaints. With respect to your first question, it's certainly something, right now, I've written the, this draft, final action by the councils, final action by the city on the matter. We can certainly make it express to say that there's an appeal to the district court. If somebody wants to appeal to district court, we'll do a little 106 case with a record, because there would be a little record made, and someone, if they want to take it further, can cough up the filing fee and go to district court, and then we, we could establish that as the final appeal. Presently, it's written, when we're done here, we're done. And I think there's a, a public policy choice to be made there. You can absolutely see that there would be an argument for the proposition that, look, when we're done at our level, we're really done, and you don't want to give more life to a complaint that did get dismissed by the council. That's one, one way to look at it. But the other way is, as you point out, which is, that it avoids the appearance of the council, to be blunt, protecting its own. And right now, that's your job in terms of conflicts of interest, because that's the charter provision, it says the council shall make, shall make the decision on conflicts of interest.
I think part of the concern wasn't necessarily protecting own, but, but like kind of shooting for somebody specifically.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Stites, manager of office.
Just to clarify, yeah, I looked it up real quick. There's five members. One is appointed by the Speaker of the State, House of Representatives, one by the President of the State Senate, one by the Governor, one by the Chief Justice of the Colorado Supreme Court, and those four collectively picked the fifth, and the fifth must be a local government employee or elected official. So pretty diverse.
Councilmember Stites?
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe. You actually answered, or asked my question on the appeals, so I, I agree with Ms. Weaver, I think that we should adopt something here. I think we're a home rule city, and we should continue to be a home rule city as much as we can be. So I, I prefer that we, we make those decisions ourselves. And I guess if we want to put in something about an appeal, go into the district court or whatever, that makes sense, but I think if we can keep it in the city, that would be beneficial to everybody, so that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Do we want to try to move forward, a consensus to move forward with our, our home rule ordinance, with an appeal process in addition? All those? Super.
Okay.
You have your marching orders, Mr.?
Very good, thank you very much.
We're going to move to the third item on our agenda. This item was brought forward by Councilwoman Nosler Beck and Councilman Corey Stites, and so I will turn the floor over to the two of them. Proposed Wheat Ridge Elementary School closures is the agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Hoppe. Well, I know most everybody kind of knows what's going on, I don't know how deep I need to go back on this, but, and, and as the public commenters tonight and, and last week had spoken to it, we have 16 schools in Jeffco Public Schools, 16 elementary schools that are proposed for closure. We have three in our articulation area, so Color Strand proposed being closed and moved to Prospect Valley, Wilmore Davis proposed, closed, and moved to Stevens, and Vivian, which is in Lakewood but part of our articulation area, and being moved to Stover, which is also in Lakewood but in our, in our articulation area. The, the memo's pretty, pretty specific on, on why, and Jeffco's been pretty specific, at least, on why, they have 96,000, or 96,000 seats available, 69 are filled. One thing that they don't mention in here is that 10,000 other students are going to charter schools and various other schools that are in the district, so it really is 76,000 seats that are being filled. But what Ms. Nosler Beck and I have been working with several community members over the last couple of weeks, couple of months, is that we don't exactly see this as a, you know, the word equity is being used in a lot of different ways here, but Wheat Ridge's articulation area's been hit the hardest. Every other articulation area maybe have one, we have three, that's quite a bit. So when you're talking about what's the articulation area, which then articulates from elementary school to middle school, which is Everett, and then into Wheat Ridge High School, the other thing that's not mentioned in any of this is that they haven't looked at the secondary schools yet either. So Everett and Wheat Ridge may still be on the chopping block come their second round of, of closures here in the next few months. So in the past, Wheat Ridge has tended to be a dumping ground for bad policy for, for Jeffco. I know most of us remember Martinson Elementary, which still sits empty to this day, I know it's used by the police officers, but it's empty the rest of the time. There's no plan for what they're going to do with these three empty schools once they're, once they're gone. They, Ms. Nosler Beck and Councilwoman Dozeman and I all met with Stephanie Schooly and the new, well, so they hired a, a, a firm called Keystone Group to moderate these discussions, and they've already either fired or moved them to the back, and they've hired somebody else today to, to come in and moderate, because apparently they weren't doing a very good enough job. So they hired another gentleman, Bill De La Cruz, to come in to, to help moderate these discussions, so. discussions. So if they're talking about $40 million deficit, they're certainly spending quite a bit of money on moderators. But, and, you know, he made the point today, I think, that was kind of interesting, that it's not really what you do, it's how you do it. And while we, we see the, the need and everything to, to close some schools, there's been no public input given. The public input that they're asking for came after the recommendation and with the promise that whatever you say, we won't be listening to except how we can further move these, these closures along. So, and I think those of us that have been in Wheat Ridge for a long time have worked through public process over the, over the last 10 years and know that that's not necessarily a great public process. Getting public input, getting an idea for what these articulation, articulation areas can handle, what the parents want. And I know part of the reason they did this is because they didn't want schools to fight back. They wanted everybody to go quietly because five or six years ago, there were five or six schools on the chopping block. They ended up closing one because they gave up on every other one that fought back. So what we're looking for here is, hopefully you guys got the email with the letter in it today. You, and there's a hard copy as well. But, and this was fairly quickly written, but I think it gets the point across, that city council can sign onto a letter asking the school district, the school board to vote no on this proposal and come back with another proposal that's actually had some public input into it. Stephanie Schooly today admitted that the public process is, her words were a lot more colorful than I'll use here, but the process has been poor. And they haven't used all the data. And maybe Patrick can speak to this again, but we were emailed a list of all the developments coming up here in the next few months over the weekend. The ones that they have, there's about eight of them on a list, and they all go to Stober because they're all in Lakewood. So for various reasons, they don't have all of our data. So we're asking for some sort of a, a vote no on this, and we'd like to work with them again to come up with a better proposal. Because six, and then voting 16 schools all at once, yes or no, doesn't seem like a very equitable way to do this either. So giving the opportunities for different schools, different articulation areas, we all know that Lakewood and Wheat Ridge and Arvada are all very different communities and have very different needs. And this doesn't address that at all. So I don't know if Ms. Nosler Beck or Ms. Dozeman want to add to that.
Um, I, thanks, thanks for that, Cory. The piece that I would just add is the, the public process piece of this is what the district has missed the mark on. And I know in lots of conversations I've had with Councilor Dozeman, with Councilor Stites and, and Councilor Ohm, that I think we all know there has to be some changes made. And that's definitely a place where we're all in agreement on. The process with the district on school closures in the past has been different. And so a lot of the community impacted by these closures is feeling as if they're being treated differently. And it feels like there's some, there's not, there's not enough information being shared and it's not a transparent process. And we, I, that is one of the major reasons why we have put in this letter that we would ask for the school district or the school board to vote no. And it's not that we're not saying to not close schools. We know that that's on, on the, on the docket for what the decisions we have to make. But it's either vote no, and we, we go back to the drawing board on this public engagement process, or we have them look at each one of these schools individually. Our schools have become community hubs, especially throughout this pandemic. And families and the communities around the schools utilize these schools to, to, to get through their everyday lives. And this other disruption is, is, is really hitting a lot of folks really hard.
I'll just add too, as, you know, as a city council, one of the first things we did when Ms. Nosler Beck, myself, Ms. Hulteen, and Ms. Hutchinson were elected, was to give Color Strand money and help them build a brand new playground. We've had no discussion with what they're going to do with that money. We recently just gave Jeffco quite a bit of money to help with the green at Stevens. And I realize Stevens is a fairly large school, but are they going to close that without telling us about it in the future? Because, I mean, that's about the level of respect we've been given. So we're just kind of looking for some more communication from Jeffco on this.
Councilwoman Weaver?
Thanks for the description of this. I do not have kids, so this is a little bit, I'm just trying to understand how to be best supportive. And so my questions are, just from watching other school boards around the state, my understanding is that it is the elected officials who have a lot of sway. And is a, is a letter to the, I mean, it is to the school board, is it to the elected officials or is it to Jeffco schools? Or is this, I mean, can, can you hold this body responsible? These are to the elected officials, correct?
This letter that we've drafted is to the school, to the school board elected members.
Okay.
On a school board, there's the superintendent, who I, to explain it, would be the equivalent of, you know, the city, the city manager, who's hired, who is at will of the, the school board. And so they run that entire, the superintendent runs the staff. And so the way, just to-
So much like, much like Patrick?
Yeah, yes. And then the, so if you saw in your packet, you know, the presentation and the, this option of a vote up or down on 16 schools is the recommendation coming from the staff at the school board. The school board, the electeds, will be the ones making that decision. And so this letter is to the ones making that decision.
And do we have one who specifically represents our area?
Yes.
Okay. Is there an appeals process? Like, like if we make a decision in this body, it can be appealed? Is there a process by which the elected officials can be held accountable?
I, I don't think there would be for a decision like this.
Okay.
I, some, we could check into. That's a good question. I don't.
I guess I'm just feeling sort of the group powerlessness of, of this situation. And, and I, and I think it's, part of it's a relic of, of a district at the county level versus at the city level. And, and I actually used to teach in public schools, but in a place where it was a, a city district. So there was a little bit more power. And I'm just kind of, my, my question is, is for those of us who don't have kids and maybe not, don't know how this kind of thing impacts us, if you guys could just sort of maybe say to the listening audience sort of how, how and why they might get involved with wanting our local schools to be, to be important? If that makes sense? And I'm very supportive of this, by the way.
Well, so we've, we've had the NRS a couple of years ago, and part of that was to help bring in stronger households. And stronger households tend to involve children because children kind of anchor you into the community. So, you know, the more we tinker with our schools and we lose schools, the more parents are going to start looking elsewhere. They're going to look at Arvada, they're going to look at Denver, they're going to look at Broomfield, they're going to look at Boulder Valley to, to go live because they're going to want to send their kids to the best schools, right? So if they're closing schools, now, part of what we, we want to do, and we want to have kid friend, we have ice cream shops opening up, we have different kid type businesses, family type businesses. Those also tend to go away when the kids go away. I can tell you, when I opened a martial arts school here 12 years ago, and Wheat Ridge was kind of known as a retirement community, a lot of people looked at me like I was stupid. Right? They, you know, it was, you know, making a decision with your heart because you want to be in Wheat Ridge. But, you know, I, I believed then, and as I believe now, that younger families are coming into these neighborhoods and they're coming in in droves, especially after the pandemic. We, we read articles, things like that, that people are leaving the city and coming to the suburbs, and they want bigger houses for their kids, they want more room, and they want that family atmosphere, and they want schools that support that. Colorado's a choice state as far as schools go, and removing three of the schools that you can choose kind of takes the choice away fairly quickly. So, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Councilwoman Hutchinson?
Thank you. The schools in Wheat Ridge have already been messed with. We had two junior highs, okay? Build a brand new, used to, Wheat Ridge Junior High was right on 38th Avenue. Build a new school, okay? Two-story. So then they've decided, okay, we're not going to have a junior high there, so we'll move Stevens off of Reed and we'll put it there. And then they brought in another school, right, where Stevens was? Okay? So they've already been kind of messing around with the schools. So now we have one junior high, we had two. I can't even imagine that we wouldn't have a high school. I don't see how that would be able to fly. But what they did with the junior high, they took the sixth graders and put them over to Jefferson, okay? Having a high school with sixth graders to 12th graders is, I don't know how that, how that's working. But Allendale School in Arvada has been closed for two years. Totally vacant. What are they going to do with the schools when they close them? Okay? And even at Stevens, they have money to where they want to redo the parking lot. They have money for that. So, you know, they've done Prospect Valley, they're building a new school. You know? The tracks at Wheat Ridge High School's changed, okay? That's all brand new. They have the playground at Color Strand. I question the way that money gets spent, you know, where it goes. But what's going to happen to the schools when they close?
We asked that today. There's, there's no answer. They haven't breached that yet. They have to continue to look at making sure that they're not going to get sued in some different areas for how they use those buildings. But they don't have a plan at the moment. It'll start in February or January.
Well, like Allendale, being closed for two years, they still have to pay for heat and water and, you know, upkeep and things like that. So there are two other schools besides Allendale that are going to be closed. Fitzmorris and Peck, okay, are going to be closed. So they're impacted. And these aren't neighborhood schools anymore. I mean, I look at the area, it's like, you know, half a mile or a mile or something like that. Those aren't neighborhood schools.
Councilwoman Nosler Beck, and then I'm going to make some comments after you. Councilwoman Dozeman, and then I'm going to make some comments after you.
Thank you. Yeah, so, wow, this is quite a flashback from 2017 when Pennington and Stober were on the closure lists. That's actually how Cory and I met Stephanie Shulley. We engaged in a three-day-long Futures Conference about how to reimagine and revision what the Wheat Ridge articulation area can look like in the future. A lot of great ideas came out of that conference, and there was no follow-up on the district's part, even though they hired a consultant to facilitate the meetings. And Wheat Ridge has disproportionately been impacted by school closures in Jeffco. So we had Martinson close and become the De Angelis Center. So it's, it's a training center for the SWAT team. And sad reality that they have to practice if a school shooting were to happen. Fruitdale closed, and then they re, they opened Norma Anderson. They've since closed Norma Anderson as well. Wheat Ridge Middle School became Wheat Ridge Five through Eight and then closed and was consolidated, or at least most of their students went to Jefferson. And then Manning actually was a part of the Wheat Ridge articulation area as well. And both Maple Grove and Manning have since been reconfigured and are now a part of the golden articulation area. So Wheat Ridge has experienced a lot of loss, a lot of shape up, mix-ups in this community. And it's, it's weird being on the other side of this. I remember how emotionally invested I was to saving Pennington. I had gone there. It had been my neighborhood school. My siblings went there. You know, it's within walking distance of my house, and so my kids often walk and bike to school. And that's, you know, something that I really enjoyed doing when I was younger and that my kids also enjoy doing. And so it's hard to look at this data and, and, and argue with the fact that we understand that the school board has to discuss closures. And I just have to give kudos to our staff because I feel like we do a wonderful job at a public input process. And that has been completely lacking in this process. And so really, it comes down to that. There was no communication to the community. There was no process ahead of this recommendation. And the criteria are kind of willy-nilly. I understand the whole all or nothing vote because the reason why the schools weren't closed in 2017 is because the, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And so the loudest, most vocal, most organized communities that stood up and fought back were able to save their schools. And it's really unfortunate that we're here, you know, looking at all of this data and I, for Wheat Ridge, I'm just very concerned about empty buildings in, in the middle and the hearts of our neighborhoods. And there's just been a lack of consideration for what would happen to the buildings. Like, there's just really a, a lack of forethought in this process, and I think that it could be done a lot better. And I, I support the letter, and I, and I hope that we can at least fight for our community and, and ask that the district follows through with what came out of the Futures Conference. And, you know, because I don't think Everett and Wheat Ridge High School would be on the chopping block because they are our only schools in, in the Wheat Ridge community. And, you know, looking at this number, the fact that Wheat Ridge has eight schools in compared to all of our surrounding communities, even though we have the least population, it, like, it's, Wheat Ridge was booming, obviously, and had lots of families, and that's what I want to support. And that's what I want these school community hubs to continue to be for our community and to draw families and children. Because I grew up with tons of kids and I miss that in my neighborhood now. But fortunately for other areas, that turnover is happening. I really appreciate Councilmember Nosler Beck and, and Stites working on this, and I, I know how emotionally charged these conversations can be. And I, I support us supporting our community schools. Thank you.
Thank you. First, let me just start by saying that since I moved to Wheat Ridge in 2010, this has been the conversation. My best friend's children's school was closed when I moved here. And then they were looking for new schools. And then it was pretty much every other year, having conversations about schools that were going to close. The process in the past is that if you can mobilize fast enough, if you have the means, if your school community has the means to mobilize, and if you can be loud enough, then typically your school doesn't get closed. So that's why this process is a much more logical process. And I, and I understand it's hard. And, and I have four children who have gone through DPS and Jeffco schools. My last two are in high school now. We've been through charter schools, Montessori schools. We've been through charter schools, Montessori schools, elementaries, middles, and now in high school. When, when you look at the process where it's 250 kids or less and 60% of the building utilized or less, you're not cherry picking schools. This process did not cherry pick. And yes, three for us, although as Ms. Dozeman just pointed out, we have eight before consolidation, which is two more than any of our other communities. And we're small. We have, before consolidation, we've got 2,349 empty seats. After consolidation, we'll still have 1,390 empty seats. It's hard. We'll go from Jefferson County and Chaco, we'll go from 49 schools that are at 250 students or less than 60% less building, underutilized building, to 16. That's a major haircut. I get it. And it hurts and it's hard. And we're in this place because the can has been getting kicked down the road until we're at the end of the road. It hurts. What I'm concerned about is at this point in time, who is advocating for bus routes even though, from Wilmore Davis to Stevens, even though it's less than a mile? Because if it's a mile or more, then there's bus routes. But also if there's any sort of dangerous or unsafe walking conditions, you'll get a bus. So who is, who's saying, "We want to make sure we get a bus"? Who's out there saying, "We want to make sure that we have our special education programs in our consolidated school"? That's, those conversations aren't happening right now. And that's, that's the concerning part. We're missing the window, missing that window. This is sad and unfortunate. And it's a point where I see a lot of people are really grieving and are in that grieving process about this. But it's also a logical and scientific process. And we cannot just go one school at a time because we will be right back in the same hole we're in sooner than later. And there are other communities that can't afford or don't have the leadership to be the squeaky wheel. And that they will get disproportionately close. The reason why we have so many is because these other communities have already lost their schools in the last couple of years. So I really feel for all the families and the parents that are in this situation. And I really, really hope that if this goes all the way through, that they are utilizing the same amount of energy and effort to, to advocate for what they want to see in their consolidated schools. I don't support the letter, I don't support a resolution. I support you guys doing what you want to do. I would prefer if the letter says the underside, undersigned city councilors support this. Because if it says "we" the council of, the city council of Wheat Ridge, that means me too and I don't support it. But like I said, I support you guys doing what you feel like you need to do for your schools. This is what I feel like we need to do for our school community as a whole. Water down resources where we will now, we will be able to shore up some of the stuff we need in our elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high school. Mr. Ohm.
Thank you, Councilmember Hoppe. The one thing I haven't looked into is the, the details, specificity. So basically when they're, when they're asking us, what they're telling us is we're closing and these are, these are the reasons why. I feel like if we're, you know, to really argue for keeping any one of the three schools, that we need to be very specific of, you know, if they're saying like we're so many students short, it's, we need to have like a response for each criteria. And some of that, I have questions of, I've asked, I've had the conversations with the superintendent about, you know, is this, is the pandemic, is it an outlier? They're showing this data and I do have some concerns that at this point in time, perhaps there were students that just did not come back. And they, and they live in other different areas. And so what we're seeing is an outlier. The other thing is, my understanding is that, like, close to where I live, the Wilmore Davis, there's, uh, there's a townhomes, the 90 townhomes that are still being built. And, you know, I would ask the question like, of those, do we have any idea? How many of those townhomes, what kind of population is going to give children back to that school? You know, so the question is, is if we knew that number, would we know in a certain timeframe that, you know, over the next two years, that development is going to yield X amount of children and we are short X amount of children? And so, you know, the criteria of closing the school because you don't have kids is, doesn't make any sense. And then if, you know, I just don't want to be shortsighted. And then if we start looking at, uh, long-term down the road, that we know that eventually, and not that far off, that the whole, the hospital will be moving, vacating, and that that property has the potential. I know that, you know, I know that's some years down the road. But I, I really hope there's not shortsightedness on, on the school district that, you know, we closed down Wilmore Davis, we closed down Color Strand, and then another 10 years down the road, we add that 2,600-unit density back to the, the hospital site. And now we are overcrowding our schools. You know, we're, and I understand it's kind of like a rubber band, you know, where the rubber band is stretched or it's not stretched. And how do we, how do we even that out so that we don't get in a predicament of, and, you know, now we're to the point where we need to add modules to schools? And I've seen this from firsthand experience of living down Las Vegas of, of having a population that was booming, booming, booming. And they would get, as soon as they got a new school built, they're adding three or four different modules just for the new kids. And, you know, was that shortsighted? Maybe, but, but then at some point in time during the recession, then that peeled back because everybody was leaving. And so it's, it's hard to, it's hard to kind of judge and you have to look at the long-term data. I don't have that long-term data of what those might be. And so I just, I don't know if those, and I kind of doubt that that conversation has come up. That, hey, by the way, you know, this is going to happen, it will get developed. We know that we need more housing and that they can have the 2,600 units and how many children will that yield down the road? But that's, that's where I see that we need, you know, there has to be, you really need some type of response letter that's detailed to argue your point, you know? Just as, as if our city attorney was writing that letter, you need valid, you need valid points. This is why, you know? And I, and I don't know if, I see the letter and there are several times where it's, it's stated, you know, "We want you to vote no" on everything. I almost feel like I just don't have, you know? If, if this was coming before us and they're asking us these questions of whether to close a school, I would raise my hand and say, "I do not have enough data to make a good decision. I do not. I need more information." And, and so if I'm trying to sit in their chair, you know, I'm asking the question, do they really have enough information or are they short on information? And I, I kind of feel like perhaps they are, they need more information to make that decision. But that's, that's, that's just my opinion, looking at this, that I feel that we need, we need a specific response to their specific criteria of why they're closing down each school. So it's very, it's a very specific response. Does that kind of make sense?
Yeah, and Mr. Ohm, thank you for, for the question about the data. So the, I'll pass over this map that City Manager Goff had, that is what he gave them, which looks different than what was in the presentation. And I did backwards math from their presentation. And it looks like for multifamily housing, they're saying like 17%. So if you have 11 units, then set, then it will make two students. So it's about 17%. And they're saying for townhouses and duplexes, it's about 35%, right? So 31 townhouses makes 11 students. And for single-family homes, it's about 41%. So, um, so I went and did the, the math on this map real fast. And now this is quick math, so this is probably give or take 25. And it would be like 266 more students. And I'll pass that over to you. Sorry, my dog's medication alarm and I keep forgetting to text my family. And, and yeah, and I believe that Lutheran Legacy Campus is capped at 2,100 units total by charter. And so, but that's also, that's anywhere from five to 15 years. Full, full build-out could potentially be 15 years from now. So something to also keep in mind. Uh, Councilwoman Dozeman, you had your hand up? Oh, sorry, Valerie Nosler Beck?
So just to respond to a couple of points made. So the, the actions and this, this request and, and kind of bringing this forward and from what we heard from some of the residents who spoke last week and tonight, that, that's one piece of the work that we're doing with the schools. We're, we're also, both Counselor Stites and myself, because our, our children go to the schools, are part of the FCB, that doesn't stand for anything. It is a part of the, it's like a, a, I don't know, naming, like within their code or whatever they, however, their governing body. And, and we're basically a transition committee. And we've been, we've been selected, it's a diverse group from the school, including usually the principal, to present on the October 24th meeting to talk about and make recommendations on, one, either please vote no. If you vote yes, these are the things we absolutely need in the new school that we're moving over to, including transportation. For example, Wilmore Davis will be now crossing Wadsworth. And, you know, Wilmore Davis experienced a fatality in 2017 at, at an intersection on Wadsworth there, so it's, it's very raw. They, they, we also are talking about curriculum. There are different curriculums at each one of the schools. We're talking about all sorts of, like, are staff going to be making that transition as well? And what can we expect and what can we, we, what, what services can be provided to our kids who are making this transition? So that is happening, happening simultaneously to all of this other work that's happening. So it's not that we're not thinking about those things because we're, this is a council action, but at least in my case, I'm a parent too in that, in that scenario. The one piece that is really interesting in the, in the data set that they've used for each of the schools is, like, in, at Wilmore Davis, and I'm using that as an example because that's my, my kid's school or homeschool, is that the preschool numbers and the centers, so the autism center there is not being counted in that total of students attending the school. So we don't hit the threshold of the capacity. We only hit that with our kind of K through five students. If we were to count those other numbers, we do get over those numbers. And so a lot of the issues that we're experiencing with the families and, and students that go there is that they're part of the school, but they're being told you're not, you're not part of this, this data set, but it will impact you. And so, for example, right now, there isn't an autism center at Stevens, but they're, and I wonder if somebody could want to correct me on that. But I, I think they don't have the same facility that we have at Wilmore. They, they will most likely be able to adjust that. But for some of the, I, I'm just sharing this, that like, for some of the parents or, or family or caregivers, for students who attend the center, it's walkable and accessible for them down the street at Wilmore, but it's no longer accessible if it's across Wadsworth. The, to the data, Counselor Ohm, that's one of the, the big pieces that we've just been asking for in community meetings. And when I say "we," I mean that FCB. Because we have a lot of people asking why, because people see development. And like I said at the beginning of our conversation tonight, I'm not thinking that we're in a situation where we're not going to have to close schools. Like, the numbers show us that we're going to have to close schools. But the, the 16 up or down with no input on where people are going to school or where they're, they're going to be accepted is, is what's really tough when there's not a data source to reference for the reasoning why.
Would one of the two of you like to try to move to a consensus?
I'd like to get a consensus from council that we move forward with the letter. That just, the one change being that instead of from the entire city council, it's from the undersigned city council members and that we move forward with that.
I just have a question. How does the, like, the rest of the city council feel about maybe adding something about, you know, like, that we already underwent this revisioning process? And, and if, like, we're unique in that we've done that and other neighboring communities have not? And so, you know, it, I don't think it's too much to ask for follow-through with that process. And, and I think that's what really sets us apart from all of the other communities being impacted is that we've had this revisioning and the district has invested in that. And so, like, that's something I think is really strong and going for us as an articulation area.
Can I move for a, or move, can we go for a consensus? That we change the wording to, instead of the entire city council, the undersigned city councilors, and that we add a paragraph in there talking about the work that's already been done in the Futures Conference that Jeffco apparently decided not to pay attention to. So, and I'm not sure if, if you're aware of this. So five years ago, almost six years ago, it was around election time, 2017, there was a, a conference that was all of the Wheat Ridge Articulation Area principals, community members, parents, PTA, school liaisons, myself, Ms. Dozeman, Stephanie Shulley, that's how we met her. We're all involved in this. There was probably Katie Zabeck who spoke tonight. We're all involved in that process. We sat for three days and, and came up with different ideas for how the Wheat Ridge Articulation Area can, could revamp itself. There, there were ideas as far as school consolidations. Every, everything was discussed throughout those three days. And after that meeting, nothing ever happened with any of that data. Nothing ever happened with any of those suggestions. I don't know if that was new district employees came in and all the data was lost. But, but that's definitely something that we've, we've done before, has actually had public input on this process. And they threw that out and started over with this, so. That we just add a paragraph stating that that was a process that we did undergo several years ago that, and we've used that time and used that, used Jeffco's money to go through this already and has been ignored. Okay? Can I get a consensus?
Looks like you have consensus, Councilmember Stites.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We are moving on to item number five and that's elected officials report, oh, four staff reports. And let's skip to you.
We have nothing else this evening, thanks.
Elected officials reports, if you just wanted to give me a hands up if you have something specific? Councilmember Ohm.
Yes, I got a couple of things real quick. I attended a multifamily conference this week and affordable housing and water conservation were discussed. Developers are aware which cities in the metro area require...
Developers are aware which cities in the metro area require affordable housing, and some even stated that they, they may look at cities that do not have a requirement to develop in order to avoid this requirement. And so I guess my, a quick question, and you don't have to answer now, is that it seems that, you know, the timing of getting affordable housing is becoming imperative. You know, as the developers realize that, you know, Wheat Ridge doesn't have it, you know, they will develop, and if we want affordable housing, we will miss that opportunity. One of the panelists, who is a developer, said that the term live, work, play is out. And this is what's really interesting, is that he said that authenticity is the new amenity. I feel strongly, and so did Mayor Protem Hulteen, that, you know, Wheat Ridge definitely, I mean, come on, we got go parade, you know, we have people posting, you know, photos of, yes, yes. So it's that, that is authentic as it gets, you know, the Carnation Festival. So this is what people really want. That is the new amenity. And I was, I was just like, wow, you know, I'm gonna, I'm definitely going to quote him on that one. That is very interesting. Mayor Protem Hulteen and I had a district meeting at Happiness Gardens this weekend. I wanted to get a little feedback, so I asked the group, it was a small group, I wish there were more, about their support of affordable housing in our district. And they conveyed to me that, you know, they, they had some kind of knee jerk reaction of what is affordable housing? And they basically, what I gathered from that was that affordable housing had a kind of a negative connotation to it. And and I kind of explained what we were trying to do, you know, the median area income. And they suggested, they suggested, instead of affordable housing, we can call it housing for people. I'm just, I'm just repeating what they said. I know it's semantics. The other, one of my other constituents that I live with, she is, she is, she's, she's working on a, she attended, she's working on her master's in public health, and she attended a, yes, yes?
Conference?
She, she attended this conference in the mountains, a couple day conference, and and I guess they were talking with other public health people. And they said that the term homelessness, homeless, is starting to be considered to be derogatory, a derogatory term. I don't know if you've heard this. And that the new term is unhoused. So I'm just, I'm passing along information, just, you know, you know, we always want to try to kind of stay current with terms and understandings and meanings, so. Thank you.
Councilwoman Nosterbeck.
Last week, I, when we were talking about the composting stuff, I brought up just that a few people had reached out to me about an increase in rats in the city. And I got two more, I, people watch the council meetings, just so you know, I got two more pings about that. Email's up and working, so that's good. But rats are, are a big issue for folks. And I specifically had her ask, just like, what's the city doing about rats? I don't know if the city can do much about rats except for provide some helpful hints or tips.
I think Amanda does. Yeah, we, we will go out and kind of look at the property and look at the area if the rats are mingling in a certain area and if, you know, if there's, you know, trash or different things, we'll recommend, you know, you might need to move that. But I think there's a lot of things in the community we can't control, like our waterways and our ditches. Rats have been increasing nationally for some reason. It's a national problem. It's not just a Wheat Ridge problem. For some reason, rats are exploding everywhere. But yeah, we don't, we don't go out and trap or kill, but we do provide recommendations on removing some of the habitats that rats like.
I, yeah, and I don't, I don't, I know that the city is very busy right now, but, you know, one of the suggestions, one of the requests was, are there more humane things to do other than like rat poison because they're really concerned about their own animals? And hello, do you have some answers?
May I respond?
Please.
I, I would be, I would be happy to have a small workshop at, at the farm or at the city on non-poison ways to mitigate your rats. But I'm, I'm not going to tell you that relocation works. Okay?
I have two massive cats.
Well, massive cats help as well. But but I am serious, there are some things you can do not, that are not poison, because the poison does kill the the raptors and the other wildlife because it's...
And I have something that I stumbled on an article a while back, and I'm just, I'm just passing along information. But New York City has had a huge rat problem. And what they figured out, how, and I completely went 100%, I mean, it's like, we also have foxes, you know, which can eat the the dead rat too. And so what they figured out was like, how can we, how can we kill these rats without contaminating the ground and contaminating other different animals? And what they came up with was dry ice. And there was a company that manufactures dry ice pellets for the rats. And the reason it was effective allegedly is because you put the dry ice, and this is, you know, the exterminators that are doing this, that they put the dry ice pellets down the hole, they plug the holes up, as the dry ice melts, it creates carbon dioxide. And the end result is nothing. It's carbon dioxide. The rats stay in the hole, they don't, they do not, yeah, they do, they don't dig the rats up. The rats are, they're, they're in the ground, and it's just carbon dioxide, and that's it. And there's, that's, maybe.
We'll be looking forward to the memo from Dr. Weaver on rat mitigation. Thank you. All right, well, with nothing else to come forward, oh, oh, sorry, Mr. Kirkpatrick, Clerk Kirkpatrick, do you have anything?
Thank you for asking. Nothing new this evening. Thank you.
Great. And with that, we are adjourned.